I would like to call this village board meeting of Thursday, November 21st, 2024 to order. Will the clerk please take the role?
Mayor Coker.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Here.
Trustee Light.
Here.
Trustee Maritato.
Here.
Trustee Potek.
Here.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes, here.
Please stand and join me in saying the flag of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, which stands one nation under God, in the great and just system of law.
I would like to call to order a public hearing by the mayor and board of trustees for the purpose of discussing annual tax levy, assessment and collection of taxes for the first year beginning May 1st, 2024, and ending April 30th, 2025. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board? Anybody from public? None? Is there a motion to close this public hearing? Trustee Light.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Trustee Schmidt.
Second.
Discussion. None. Role call board, please.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Maritato.
Yes.
Trustee Potek.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Community notes means trustee Schmidt, please.
The next coffee and chat with the village president and board will be Saturday, December 7th, at the Lynda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 a.m. to noon. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the village president or village board, please call the village president's office anytime at (630) 909-5302, or contact your local district trustee. While writing your holiday greeting cards to friends and family, please remember our military personnel who have or who are currently serving our country during the holidays. The village is collecting holiday greeting cards and will mail them in time for a holiday delivery. Please drop off your holiday greeting cards to Village Hall by December 5th. Please do not put cards in envelopes, decorate cards with glitter, or add personal contact information like email or social media. For more information, please call Jessica at (630) 260-6060. Thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee Siddiqui, please.
We would like to remind residents that per village code, do not rake or move leaves or yard waste into village streets. This will help ensure our streets are clean and clear of any debris for safe driving. Yard waste collection occurs on the same day as regular waste and recycling pickup. The final collection day for yard waste will be November 27th, 29th, and 30th, depending on when your usual waste and recycling pickup occurs. If you have any questions, please call Republic Services at (847) 981-0091. Join us for the Glendale Heights City Market on the first and third Thursday of each month. Shop for food, produce, crafts, and more from locally sourced vendors. The market runs from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Sports Hub. If you would like to be a vendor or for more information, please contact Tanya Mako at (630) 909-5459.
Trustee Light, please.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. The village of Glendale Heights invites the entire community to celebrate the start of the holiday season with the annual tree lighting ceremony on Monday, December 2nd. The ceremony will be from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. at Camera Park with the official tree lighting at 7:15. There will be hot chocolate, sweet treats, photos with Mr. and Mrs. Claus, and more. If you have any questions, please contact Jessica at (630) 260-6060, or visit the Leisure Service Department website at www.ghrc.org. Join the village of Glendale Heights and the historical committee for our veterans, I'm sorry, our Victorian Christmas, featuring a brand-new Kris Kringle Market. Come on out to Heritage Park and Historic House located at 311 Windy Point Drive on Saturday, December 7th, from 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. In addition to the new Kris Kringle Market, there will be tours of the Historic House, arts and crafts, horse-drawn carriage rides, and much more. If you're interested in being a vendor or for more information, please contact Jessica at (630) 260-6060. Thank you.
Trustee, clerk Schmidt, please.
The Glendale Heights Christmas Sharing Program helps give back to those families in need during the holiday season. We understand the importance of the holidays and the challenges that many families face each and every day. Christmas sharing giving trees with wished-for items and ornaments are now available at Village Hall, the Lynda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens, and the Sports Hub as we try to give back to those in need. If you are interested in making a monetary donation to support the Christmas Sharing Program and give back to the community, please contact Dennis at Dennis underscore Statura, S-T-A-C-H-U-R-A, at glendaleheights.org.
Trustee Maritato, please.
Get in the spirit of the holiday season and register your house for the holidays in the Heist House Decorating Contest. Register your home starting Monday, December 2nd, through Saturday, December 21st, to compete for the best decorated house in Glendale Heights. An interactive map with voting will be active starting Tuesday, December 24th, and the winner will be announced on Monday, January 6th, on the village's Facebook page. For more information, please contact Jessica at (630) 260-6060. Join us for breakfast with Santa at Glendale Heights Golf Club on Saturday, December 14th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. Breakfast includes all-you-can-eat pancakes with sausage and a beverage. The price for an adult breakfast is $5, and children's breakfast is $3. Photos with Mr. and Mrs. Claus are $3. No registration is required, and the event fee is paid at the door. Don't miss your chance to tell Santa what is on your Christmas wish list. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060.
Trustee Potek.
During the month of November, parking restrictions will be in effect from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. due to street sweeping. Color-coded no-parking signs are posted into four different zones throughout the village. Parking is prohibited on Monday for the red zone, Tuesday for the blue zone, Wednesday for the green zone, and Friday for the brown zone. To find out your zone, visit the village website. For any questions on the street sweeping program, please contact Public Works at (630) 260-6040.
Trustee Schroder, please.
The Lynda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens is a senior health insurance program, and it's sponsored and by the seniors, and is offering open enrollment assistance for senior citizens now through December 7th. Our trained volunteer counselor can provide one-on-one assistance to Medicare beneficiaries and their caregivers. Volunteer counselors can provide you with the information you need to make educated decisions about your insurance. Please call the Lynda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens at (630) 260-6050 to schedule an appointment for assistance with your health insurance questions.
A proclamation to proclaim Saturday, November 38th, 2024 as Small Business Saturday. If there are no objections, I will sign this proclamation. Second, presentation of the draft 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report by Christine Torres of Crowe LLP. Hello, young lady.
All right. Good evening, everybody. It's wonderful to see you here today to talk about the audit for the fiscal year ended April 30th, 2024. We're going to walk through just a few items related to the audit. We'll start with a quick audit overview, talk briefly about the financial statements themselves, and then finish up with some required communications. So, the audit timeline, we begin way back in the spring, is when the audit starts. We start working with management to understand what has happened throughout the year. We continue that work through the summer where we provide our request list to management, do some internal control testing and some initial testing in the summer, and then we do our year-end testing at the end of the year, usually at the very end of August, the beginning of September. After that, we work on working with management to develop the financial statements and putting everything together to make sure everything is correct, and then filing by the deadlines of October 31st. As we go through our process, we're taking a look at all the transactions that happen during the year, determining where any risks might have happened, and what controls we need to know and understand in order to continue with the audit and determine what procedures to put in place. And then during our field work is really where we takes all of this information, where we take our control testing, our documentation, to determine how to test our year-end balances. And that happens at the end of the year. Also during this time, we're getting an understanding of what type of federal money the village has received during the year and spent, so that we can take that information and use the information provided by the federal government to determine what programs we need to test for compliance and controls as well. We do that in conjunction with our financial statement audit. Then we get to the very end of the audit where we are putting the report together, working with management to make sure all of the numbers and the amounts within both the statements and the notes are fully supported, and then also working with them to put together the additional information so that you can submit to one of the GFOA to be eligible for an award on your financial statements. So, the good news that I'm here with today is really the results of all of this testing and all of this work is the auditor's opinion, and the auditor's opinion for this year is unmodified or clean, which means there are no exclusions, no scope limitations, and nothing that we could not get comfortable with on all of the different aspects as we went through that audit. So, that is the best type of opinion that you can receive. As we go through this testing, we're taking a look at the financial statements and how they are. There's two sets of financial statements within the report. There's the government-wide financial statements, which includes all of your long-term activity as well as the current year's short-term activity. So, it includes your capital assets, your long-term debt, and all of the information that brings everything together. In addition to that are the statements that are included, are more statements that you're used to seeing on a regular basis at the fund level and without all of that long-term activity as well. So, as we go through, we take a look, and of course, the most important fund is the general fund. That's where the majority of revenues and expenses happened for you during the year. And during this year, the general fund did have an increase or gave back to its fund balance approximately $2.7 million. So, what that means is you had more revenue than you had expenses. There's a lot of different reasons for why that can happen in a certain year. It could mean that you received more grant reimbursements for expenditures that happened in the past year. Could mean that some of your taxes came in higher than what you were originally budgeting for, so your expenses were in line with your budget, but your revenues were a little bit higher. So, what that does is it then brings into cash and investments into the village that you can then use going forward. And what that does is it provides your fund balance. Now, your fund balance is really what you have left after you look at what you have on hand in cash and assets, and then take out who you still owe at the end of the month. That's what's left. And at the end of the fiscal year, you had approximately 9.3 months of expenditures. So, what that means is if you stopped collecting all the revenues that you get today on a monthly basis, on a daily basis, you would have about nine months' worth of regular expenditures that you could go without revenue. Best practice by some well-known institutions in the government field say you should have a minimum two, and currently, your board policy says you should have four. So, you are above that, where you are right now. However, it's not bad to be above it because you never know what's going to happen as things go along, and I know you're always looking to see what you can spend your money on wisely. The second part of my presentation here is to go over a few more opinions, and these are more compliance opinions. So, they're more looking at, are you in compliance with the federal grants that you're receiving, as well as the compliance within your different tax increment financing districts? So, all of these different areas have specific procedures that are put in place to understand both the controls over the transactions that are occurring within this area, as well as to make sure you're meeting the requirements of the various things that go along with it. So, when we look at the single audit, we're making sure to understand that the expenditures related to the grants that you received are actually following the grant agreement and are allowable. And I'm happy to say that when we went through this testing, we had two major programs for the fiscal year, your Illinois EPA grant money, as well as your coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. All of the ARPA funds were spent on, for Public Works, for the wastewater treatment plant and their improvements there, and that is in line with what the grant requires. And I can say that we had no issues as we went through all of that testing. They were properly spent, the funds were bid out as they were supposed to be, and all the reporting to the federal government was accurate. So, no significant deficiencies, no material weaknesses, and no non-compliance identified. The same is true for the Tiff District when we tested those compliance with those activities as well. As we go through, we always recommend taking a look through the financial statements and understanding the different items within there. If you were to key on in some important areas, we recommend reading the Management's Discussion and Analysis section. It has a really good summary of prior year-to-current year results, as well as some budget-to-actual explanations as well, and also the very first note in the financial statements because it provides a discussion of all of the different accounting policies and things that are used to create the numbers in accordance with the standards. There was one new accounting standard that was implemented this year, however, did not have a very significant effect on the village. It's really taking long-term IT subscriptions and recognizing them within the statements. The GASB wanted to bring in different items that were not previously captured under their regulations so that the readers would have an understanding of all the long-term contracts that were out there. As we continue to go through, there are some, a few items I wanted to bring your attention to that are estimates within the, within the financial statements. We have the allowance for uncollectible accounts, fair market value of investments, useful lives of capital assets, and the pension and post-retirement obligations. All of these different items have things that are unestimated or based on management judgment and are not necessarily a hard and fast number that can be identified at year end. And what we do as part of the audit is to take a look and understand how management came up with these amounts for the fiscal year, if they make sense, if they're following protocols, and if they're following standards that are out there. So, for example, in the pension and post-retirement obligations, are the assumptions that are being used by the actuary in line and the most updated? For example, mortality tables are the most recent ones being used to develop that liability. And here again, as we went through and did that testing, no significant items were identified. Corrected misstatements is something that would occur if, as we went through the process, we found an error in the information that management provided in regards to the financial statements. And I'm happy to say here that there were no significant, there was no corrected misstatements that were identified throughout the audit process. If they were significant, if they were material, we would identify them here, and you would also have a material weakness or a significant deficiency in line with it because that would mean that something went wrong throughout the financial reporting process, that management did not find the error, and that we found the error as part of the audit. The uncorrected misstatement is something that's very common. It has to do with the IMRF Pension Plan, and it's across all of the different users. There's a difference in timing from when they do their actuarial evaluations to when they finalize their audit report. So, there is always a slight difference there, and we pass on that adjustment. So, that's not anything that the village can control, but it is something that we point out as we go along so that we are aware of it and tracking it. Finally, just want to cover some significant and unusual transactions, and as we continue along, we know that the drawdowns on the Illinois EPA loan is something that is a significant transaction for the village every year. And what we're doing is as we go along, we're making sure that those drawdowns are being utilized appropriately, requested at the right time, and are fully supported. And as we look at these transactions for this fiscal year, we had no issues with how that money was drawn down or used in the process of the program. And then finally, as we go through, we take a look and understand and would bring to you if we had any difficulties as we went through the audit with management. And I have to tell you that your finance department does an excellent job of preparing all of the information for us, working through our requests, and pulling in many other departments as we go along. We work with people from Public Works, from Recreation, from many other departments as we get support so that we can finish up the audit, and it is definitely a team effort from the management side. So, we appreciate the effort that's been put forth by everybody here at the village. And that is everything I had on the audit. So, if there's any questions, I would be happy to.
Christine, I, yes, thank you, thank you. First, I want to say thank you to the finance department. You guys did really great. Everybody worked very hard. I know it takes a lot of time and a lot of effort, but it was a great effort, and it's nice to see the village in good shape, and we're doing really good fiscally. My credit, my question is credit score rating. Where are we at now with?
My understanding is there's been no downgrade in the credit score rating at all.
The current rating from Moody's is an AA3, not changed.
No, perfect, thank you. That's all I had. Sorry, he answered it for you.
That's okay. No, I'm happy to share.
No, thank you.
Anybody from public, any comments?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Do you have last year's financial report on the balance of the, this year we're at nine months. Do you remember what last year's was?
Nine point three.
Do you have any idea, or Doug?
Right about 10.
10? So, we went down a little bit then?
Yeah, well, when we get to the mid-budget, we'll be back up to 10.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Any question by any member board or from community members? Okay, Ms. Christine, thank you very much. Awesome presentation. I learn a lot from you every year.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the time.
And I want to emphasize on, you know, like, two years minimum, this is the requirement, and we have incalculated 9.3 months expenses, you know, and average is, how much is average? Four, for four years. So, it's wonderful, you know, and I believe our score is a little went down because we got loan about how much for water treatment, $12 million?
No, it's just the ARPA money was 4.2 million, but we'll be back up to 10 months at mid-budget.
It's a wonderful budget, you know. Okay, next, public discussion, any, again, anybody from public, any comments? Speak up, guys. Oh, okay. Next is you have the concept agenda before you work ating village administration. Doc, please read the concept agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. One, approval of the regular board meeting minutes of November 7th, 2024. Two, approval of the committee, the whole meeting minutes of November 7th, 2024. Three, approval of accounts payable listing in November 21st, 2024, total amount of $1,915,801.38. Four, resolution to approve and authorize the execution of an agreement between the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, and Concentric Integration LLC for the furnishing of professional engineering services for the 2024 Utility Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition SCADA Telemetry Improvements Project in the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Five, resolution to approve and authorize the execution of a GIS consortium service provider contract. Six, a resolution authorizing issuance of a notice of award purchase order to DXP Enterprises for the purchase of one Fairbanks pump for the village's wastewater treatment plant. Seven, resolution authorizing execution of change order number one, final, for the 2024 crack filling program in the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Eight, resolution to approve and authorize the execution of the Second Amendment to Utility Building and Mailing Services Contract, buy-in-between Third Millennium Associates Incorporated in the village of Glendale Heights. Nine, a resolution to approve an application for an outdoor pyrotechnic display permit for the 2024 Glendale Heights Tree Lighting Ceremony. Ten, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of a First Amendment to the Janitorial Service Contract, buy-in-between Best Quality Facility Services LLC, DBA Best Quality Cleaning in the village of Glendale Heights. Eleven, a resolution authorizing execution of change order number one for the Camera Park Turf Field Improvements Project in the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Twelve, approval pay request number one, final, to SKC Construction Incorporated for the 2024 crack filling program, total amount not to exceed $178,854, attorney approved. Thirteen, approval pay request number 14 to IHC Construction Companies LLC for the wastewater treatment plant phosphorus removal upgrade project, total amount not to exceed $1,091,989.46. Fourteen, approval pay request number five to FH Passion SN Nielsen Associates LLC for the Camera Park Turf Field Improvements, total amount not to exceed $123,511. Fifteen, approval of the 2025 Summer Seasonal Pay Plan. Sixteen, approval of the consent items.
Is there a discussion, any discussion by board members? Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
I move that the board approve the consent agenda as presented by the administration.
Second, trustee, who was first, Light or trustee Light?
Okay, we'll go with that. Yeah, I second that.
Okay. Role call board, please.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Maritato.
Yes.
Trustee Potek.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. Old business, there is none, new business. Number one, 2025 Insurance Renewal, Lee Cozette Aligned Insurance Services. Welcoming.
Good evening, mayor and trustees. Thank you for your time. Presenting today, the December 1st, 2024 through 2025 renewal. This includes your property and liability coverages. Just wanted to share with you just kind of a little bit of a quick history because it does play a factor in the renewal of this year's insurance. So, originally, Glendale Heights has been on a January 1st renewal date, and at last year, the incumbent, which would have been Travelers Insurance, made the decision not to renew a portion of the insurance policy. At that time, we went out to market, it was very challenging. We had a couple insurance companies offer to quote "just" the missing liability, which would have been the public officials and employment practices. Those quotes came in exceedingly high. So, we were fortunate by having a relationship with an existing carrier, which is Illinois County's Risk Management Trust, ICRMT, wrote the village's excess workers' compensation insurance. And by having that established relationship, ICRMT was willing to quote all of the insurance, property and all lines of liability, and at a competitive rate. By having ICRMT write the Glendale Heights entire insurance program, there was, I guess you would say, a requirement. It is a pool, and they ask for a minimum commitment of 12 months to their program. So what we're looking at, going from January 1 to December 1, you were only committing to 11 months. So at this renewal, we are asking, or kind of required, if you will, to continue with ICRMT. The other requirement, by being part of the ICRMT program, is they appraise all of your buildings, which is a very positive thing. This is no additional cost to the Village, and it gives you an accurate evaluation of the building's values. That appraisal was conducted in March, I believe, by an independent appraisal company. And it was determined by the appraisal company, there were a number of locations that were a bit undervalued. So what I'd like to share with you at this time is just a high level of the building and content values at last year's renewal was in the neighborhood of $116 million, whereas this year, based on the appraisals, it's in the neighborhood of $196 million. So you can see there's a significant increase in the building values. Now, this is a good thing, your assets are now accurately insured at these values. But as you can imagine, the premium associated with the building coverage went up, and it is reflected in the overall premiums. So at this time, I'd like to share with you the specifics. The ICRMT offers your property, all of your liability coverages, and that package premium is $635,520. That is, also, they offer your excess workers compensation, and that premium at the renewal is $165,873. Now, outside of ICRMT, you have three additional lines of coverage. Cyber liability, now that coverage does continue on a January 1 renewal date, and their annual premium is $13,367, which is roughly the same as expiring. You also have a crime policy, also known as employee dishonesty policy, and that is a three-year term. And this renewal, if you will, it's the third of, third year of that three-year term. So that premium has stayed the same over each year. And that comes to $2,739. The last policy that renews effective January 1 is a small policy. It's called a blanket accidental, and it provides some coverage for medical expenses. Also, there is a very small death benefit associated with it, but this is to protect any volunteers that are in service to the Village. So if they should be injured, or heaven forbid, worst, worst-case scenario, they should have loss of life in service of their volunteering here at the Village, this insurance policy will cover them. And it's a minimal premium of $500. So at the end of the day, we are sharing with you, excuse me, one thing I failed to mention is, the Alliant Insurance Services is paid on a fee. We do not collect commissions in conjunction with your policies, and the fee is $46,000 for the, for the services we provide throughout the year. So at the end of the day, your renewal premium, including the fee, is $863,999. I would gladly entertain any questions that you might have about this year's insurance renewal. Yes?
So you mentioned 46, around, that's your fee for searching the insurance for us, correct?
Yes, I mean, that's in part what we do, but as your insurance broker, we assist administration, when requested, to do contract reviews, to see if they are in line with what your insurance coverages are, if you're going into a contract, and vice versa, if someone is coming to you with a contract, or, you know, verifying their insurance, to see if it's adequate per what the Village would request of that vendor.
Okay, and that's per year, every year?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Why does Village going into an insurance pool?
A pool?
That is bad for us, isn't it?
No, sir, it is not. This is, it's a pool.
Why are we going into pool then?
It, it's a pool in the sense that it has a common renewal date, that you aren't afforded any renewal date that you would wish. So you don't, in the past, it was January 1, now it's December 1. This pool also has the focus of public entities. So you are in an insurance program that has common exposures. Now, this ICRMT manages the insurance, just like any insurance company does. They assess the risk, they also purchase reinsurance, so they evaluate, just like an insurance company would. They hire actuaries to maintain estimates of what the payouts are going to be for all the members of the pool. But it is truly, the other advantage with ICRMT is, they have it part of the agreement, that you're not assessable. One of the disadvantages of a true pool is if it has a particularly difficult claim year, they can come back to its members and ask for additional assessments. ICRMT does not, they have it in their policy form, if you will, there are no assessments associated with purchasing the insurance.
Can you define common expense, exposures?
Common exposures, things such as how many autos you have, how many employees you have. Of those employees, how many are full-time and part-time? How many police officers do you have? Do you have a parks department?
Does that include liabilities too?
All liabilities are covered under your insurance program through ICRMT. So things such as general liability, auto liability, employment practices, your public officials, you also have liquor liability as part of your program. There are others, sub-limited liabilities, such as sexual abuse or molestation, and then ICRMT also has excess liability. So they're offering you another $10 million over the primary levels. So for example, general liability has a $1 million per occurrence, and if you should have one loss that exceeds that $1 million, then you go into the excess layer. And all of that is proposed in this ICRMT package.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned that there's a lot of insurance companies which denied to cover us. Do you know how many?
I don't have the number in front of me, but I want to say it was in the, it was in the neighborhood last year of, well.
There were nine of them last year.
There, yeah, I was gonna say, there was eight to 10.
So what significantly has changed that they denied us? Because I believe we, we were doing good for the last 20 years, we were fine, correct?
Correct. Unfortunately, what they looked at is some of, there was employment, a few employment practices, claims, as well as a few, a couple, I should say very specifically, a public officials liability claim. So the culmination, those claims tend to be more rare, and the fact that in recent history, there was in the three, four claims that happened under that specific line of coverage.
So three claims occur in the same year?
It was over the course of two years.
Two years, which, and if you go back to our last 10 or 15 years, how many claim did you see?
I'm sorry, I don't have that exact number. So 10 or 15, but roughly, over the course of the, I would say 10 years, to my recollection, there was two.
In 10 years.
But also, part of it, part of it is the severity. So while maybe three, excuse me, four claims in the last two years is not unheard, it's not unheard of, it's not great, but the severity of the claims, they were totaling in excess of $400,000 total.
So just like I have my car insurance, if I have two accidents, obviously, you know, my, my premium is gonna go up, same thing in here, okay?
Right. And a little bit of it is marketplace conditions, it wasn't solely Glendale Heights, in the sense of, yes, the claims raised an eyebrow, but coming off of COVID, when these claims occurred, a lot of carriers were apprehensive of especially employment practices-type claims. So they, I would say the marketplace was erring on the side of extra cautious.
So going forward, would you like to give us any advice, what we should be more careful, like, you know?
And that's part of our services, yes. Throughout the course of the year, we're always working with administration. ICRMT also has a risk management group, to answer your question specifically, there are things that you can always continue to do, how much training you have to raise awareness as far as harassment. Also, on the public official side of it, having training as trustees and new board members come in to understand protocols, et cetera, on, on how to manage, if you will. Because public officials is the version of management liability. And I think administration has done a good job of staying in touch with us, but we also understand there are things that happen, and that's why you buy insurance. You have insurance in case those claims do occur.
Great. And I believe, Doug, we, we did have the training and all that.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, ma'am, thank you very much.
My pleasure, it's always a pleasure, we're working with you.
So, we're looking for guidance to move forward with the renewal of this?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, I'm fine.
Absolutely.
Any questions so far? Yes.
Nadja Zay, Coventry Circle. I guess this would be a question for her or Doug. Now, I know you mentioned that it was the most competitive rate of insurance, but I'm just wondering if there was only one that was quoted from this insurer, how is it the most competitive rate if there wasn't any other quote provided from any other company? So would that mean that it was only compared to the previous Travelers Insurance, or, you know?
No, so this was the renewal of the contract from last year. When we went to contract in '24, it went to market, and there was, and I can bring it up, eight or 10 insurance companies. But only one offered us full coverage.
Full coverage, but the, did the rest of them also give you a quote?
It was way higher.
Yes, not even in the same ballpark.
So it was compared to recent market?
Just, just to clarify, when, when I say competitive, it isn't just related to premium?
Please speak in the speaker.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, I'm sorry.
So when I say the term competitive, it relates more than just premium. ICRMT was the only one that would offer terms that would cover the entire exposures in all the liabilities, all the property coverages. Competitive also means, if we had another quote, we would look at the policy form, things that trigger the loss, are they covering it, are they not covering it? So premium is the easiest one to point to, but then as the broker, it's, I do help and assess what would be a better choice for the Village. And as Doug mentioned, hands were a little tied last year. We had a indication, which means the carrier says, this is what we kind of think it would be, we're not quoting it, which means is, you can buy it at that price. They were offering $1 million just for the public officials' employment practices. And as you heard tonight, ICRMT is offering everything well under that $1 million, so.
Is there any other way that we can bring in more insurers, or is this kind of like, this is all we have, and then that's it, you know? Because obviously, there's a history of that.
I believe this question should be to Mr. Flint, you know?
I'm not saying for this year, obviously, it would be.
Actually, instead of broker.
Yeah, okay. And I did communicate with Doug earlier about this, because as a constituent, you worry, because this is high premiums and things of that nature. So as residence, he did clarify that this would not affect our property taxes, and that would be more on the school board level, so that's a piece of mind for all of us.
Let me explain, we do not impose property tax, that is a Bloomingdale ownership assessor office, you know? So this is, your question is back to those assessors office, not us. Anybody else? Okay, next. An ordinance providing for the levy assessment and collection of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2024, and ending April 30th, 2025, for the Village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, LNI, first reading. Number three, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2024, and ending April 30th, 2025, in and for Village of Glendale Heights Special Service Area Number One, Glendale Lakes Business Park, first reading. Number four, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2024, and ending April 30th, 2025, in and for the Village of Glendale Heights Special Service Area Number Two, Glendale Industrial Park, first reading. Number five, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2024, and ending April 30th, 2025, in and for Village of Glendale Heights Special Service Area Number Three, High Grove East Industrial Park, first reading. Number six, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2024, and ending April 30th, 2025, in and for the Village of Glendale Heights Special Area Number Four, High Grove West Industrial Park, first reading. Number seven, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2024, and ending April 30th, 2025, in and for the Village of Glendale Heights Special Area Number Five, Glen Point Business Park, first reading. Number eight, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2024, ending April 30th, 2025, in and for the Village of Glendale Heights Special Service Area Number Six, Polo Club Heights Industrial Park, first reading. Number nine, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2024, and ending April 30th, 2025, in and for the Village of Glendale Heights Special Area Number Seven, SoCo, Saco or SoCo, Industrial Park, first reading. Number 10, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2024, and ending April 30th, 2025, in and for the Village of Glendale Heights Special Area Number Eight, Glendale Heights Business Park, first reading. Number 11, an ordinance for the Village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, LNI, partial abatement of the 2024 tax levy for 200, 24 million, I believe, right? 210,000 general obligation bond service, 2029, first reading.
2019.
Twenty, sorry, 2019, first reading. It, next is, is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item only? Anybody from public, please?
Kim Darling-Greenbrier, this one's for you, Doug. What is the levy for this year?
Go.
Oh, sorry.
The tax levy is the same as it was last year, and the same as it was the year before.
Thank you. And sorry, this one's for you, Keith. The $130,000 that we had to add to the beautiful soccer field that we have, is that for the rock that we were discussing? Is that for the new digging? Is that what that was for?
Yeah, so it's actually 142, and that was a combination of, most of it was the permitting and the work that was done based on the changes that the stormwater management required. There were a couple other smaller items, a gate and some trucking stuff, but most of it was that.
But that's what that was?
Yes.
We've discussed that already.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else from public? None? Executive session, there is none. Adjournment, is there a motion to adjourn? I need motion to adjourn. Okay, trustee Light.
Motion to adjourn.
Trustee Schmidt.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Pochek.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder. Trustee Schroder.
Motion to adjourn.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned. Trustee Schmidt, you have the authority of the whole meeting.
Call this meeting, the committee of the whole meeting of Thursday, November 21st, 2024 to order. Will the clerk please note who is present?
Noted.
Does anyone have any additions? Okay. Okay, committee reports. Glendale Lakes Golf Club Committee.
No report.
Okay, historical committee.
Of course I do. Okay, first of all, I want to say thank you to all my committee members, one of them here. John, thank you for coming out tonight. It's nice and I like to see outside the historical house. December 7th will be our Victorian Christmas and our Kris Kringle Market. I know the Kris Kringle Market is new, so come on out and check it out. I want to hear reviews and opinions and stuff like that, how we can make it better, what the residents actually think about that. It goes from 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM on December 7th. And then I'm also asking the residents if they have any historical items, photographs, newspapers, documents from Glendale Heights history that we could archive and possibly display at the historic house so that the rest of the village could enjoy. That's about all I have. Thanks.
Okay, ordinance committee.
No report.
Okay. Parks and Rec Committee.
We had a park meeting November 19th, Tuesday. Number items worth discussing, including updates on special events and programs. It was great to hear that we have 40 more kids in indoor soccer. That brings us up to the total now is over 300, which is, which is good. Staff also talked about how pickleball has been picking up in the mornings. Campbell Park Turf Project is also discussed and we updated on the project and how it's nearing completion with the fear opening up to the residents and rentals in early 2025. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Property Enhancement Committee, there is no report. Senior Citizen Advisory Committee.
Senior citizens, yes, I have some sort of a report. We, the seniors had a very extremely successful bake sale last week. And we'd like to thank those who baked and those who bought. Because of you, it was very successful and we thank you so much. And that's all I'd like to say for the seniors.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I have a statement here. I've been asked to read the same one as I made last time, but recent committee of the whole meetings have been characterized by name calling, abusive personal remarks, and a general lack of respect by some committee members toward their fellow members, by members of the audience toward committee members, staff, and other audience members. Result is chaos and a display which has made our village the laughing stock of those who follow our meetings on broadcast and social media. Do not intend to allow this to happen again tonight. Expect all persons in attendance tonight to conduct themselves with civility and decorum. There will be no name calling or personal attacks, attempts to demean or belittle others or create disorder. This meeting is conducted under Robert's Rules of Order, which contains provisions for the orderly conduct of this meeting. It also contains means for the removal from the meetings of persons who are disruptive. I don't wish to invoke these steps, but I will if necessary. The meeting will then proceed without the disruptive person or persons in attendance. Let us now proceed with the meeting, acting like civilized ladies and gentlemen. We've had a request to speak from Keith Nichols. Topic, this year's Oktoberfest.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, trustees, and village board members. My name is Keith Nichols. I'm speaking on behalf of Elka Inc. tonight. And with me are Alfreda Byer and Detard Byer. There, that's your son. We stand before you today with sincere gratitude for allowing us to organize and present the Glendale Heights Oktoberfest for the past 13 years. This festival has become a cherished tradition in our community and we are truly honored to be its stewards. I would like to give you some history of our business. Elka Inc. has operated in Glendale Heights for nearly 25 years. Elka Inc., which was owned solely by Alfreda Wolfgang Byer at that time, founded the Schnitzel Plots Restaurant in 1999 and operated it until it was sold to S C M J Inc. in 2019. Our organization, Elka, however, has always retained full ownership of the Glendale Heights Oktoberfest, which we established in 2012, including its name, logo, intellectual property, and equipment. In 2021, following the cancellation of the festival in 2020 due to the COVID pandemic, we sought a food preparation partnership with the new owners of the Schnitzel Plots, but they declined. Subsequently, Elka has independently provided all of the food services for our Oktoberfest with Chef Wolfgang managing kitchen operations until partnering with Chef Terrell Cole. Wolfgang personally trained Chef Terrell in his standards and signature recipes to maintain our festival's authentic quality. This past year has been one of significant changes. Following the 11th Annual Oktoberfest in 2023, Chef Wolfgang passed away, as many of you know. While this year's festival was bittersweet without him, we maintained his high standards. Recent statements that were presented have caused some confusion about the festival's ownership and management. Just to clarify, the claims that were made were incorrect. The promotional materials that were referenced were from our festival in 2013 when Elka owned both the restaurant and the festival. Please note that S C M J Inc. has never had any ownership, managerial, or financial stake in the Glendale Heights Oktoberfest. When we were asked to submit a proposal for this year's festival, we gladly complied and we truly are deeply grateful to have been selected to continue with the tradition. We look forward to many more years of collaboration with the Village of Glendale Heights and we want to sincerely thank you for your continued support and trust in Elka Inc. to be able to deliver this beloved community event. Thank you for your time.
I want to say thank you, Ms. Wolfgang and his son, you know? Your services are awesome. And other thing is, thank you for letting me in every day. I love that place. I love those people. Love you that many.
Thank you. That means a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Marianna Britt.
Good afternoon, Marianna Britt, Glendale Heights. As we move into the winter season now, I guess I really would like to address issues around rental properties and ensuring that the landlords are communicating correct parking information to their tenants, rules around noise, and just make sure that that their tenants understand, and the reason why I'm bringing this up, I have a rental that turned into rental next door to me. We've been working through some issues. I've been working with, hopefully, the chief to get an issue resolved. But they have a one and a half car driveway. But they have three cars. They don't use their garage. And so the prior people would park on the grass. Well, after a while, that grass will start to look really bad. And if you've seen my yard, you know I take really good care of my garden and my flowers and everything. And I don't want our neighborhood to look really bad. So I'm just asking that people who have rental properties communicate or let their tenants know that they still have to follow the rules of the village. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address?
Hello, my name is Denise Shutey and I have been a Glendale Heights resident for more than 20 years. I serve on the Homeowners Association for the Hidden Glen subdivision. Our community was developed in 1996. We have 12 buildings and 94 homes that total over $23 million in aggregate value. Our homeowners pay more than $500,000 in taxes every year. And our board is committed to maintaining the buildings as required by our governing documents in the state of Illinois. Our buildings are now 28 years old, as are grounds. And we are tasked with undertaking some projects of significant cost to remedy grading, erosion, and stormwater runoff issues that we're having on our property, as well as undertaking a deck replacement project that is coming in at a price tag of over $200,000 for the decks. I have reached out to the village departments for the last four months asking for their assistance as we do our due diligence in investigating the site engineering, topography, and stormwater management requirements that were approved when this community was developed 28 years ago by Kimball Hill, a major developer in the area. I've written to community development. I've written to code enforcement since July. I've done an F O I A request for the records from the village regarding the topographical plan, the stormwater management plan, site engineering plan, and any building plans that are available. My F O I A request was turned down with no reason. I've since then reached out to community development, code enforcement, with second and third requests for this information and have received no response. I am required as part of the association board to comply with the state's mandate that we shall at all times conform to and be maintained in accordance with the ordinance and development plan approved by the village. Yet I can't get any of these plans. So I want to bring this to your attention and make you aware of the situation and see if I can get some of your assistance in helping us to make these improvements and meet village code requirements as we move forward in the interest of maintaining our property values and safety.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Ma'am.
Mr. Flint.
I'll meet with you after. Ma'am, yes, you can come to my office and we will talk, you know?
I'm sorry, what's the address of your?
We don't have a single address.
Yeah. Do you know which district is that, Doug?
What's an address of the house? What streets?
We are at Gladstone, Lakewood, Hidden Glen, right at Army Trail in Bloomingdale.
District 5. You can come to my office and we will talk.
Ma'am, I'll talk to you right after this meeting.
Okay, very good. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks for talking.
Is there, is there anybody else that wishes to address us?
Kim Darling-Greenbrier. Pat, you said that we are going to rent out the soccer fields and the kids are going to use the soccer field?
That's our plan.
But the kids get to use the soccer field first?
Oh, yeah. Our kids, our residents, we have a first that it's only when nothing's available then we can, then we see if we can rent it out.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote, please. No, never mind. Just voice vote. All in favor? Opposed? Meeting adjourned.